Committee of the whole meeting. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village Board of the Committee of the whole meeting for November 18th, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Camer.
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman, absent. President Wallace.
Here. A few items on our agenda this evening. The first falls under Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is 706 Heather Lane Front Yard Variation. And that's the petitioner, James and Renee Labud, are here with that property. And I think we have some information up on the screen that Jim can present.
Thank you, Trustee Camer. Labuds have applied for a front yard variation, or a front porch addition, onto their existing structure at 706 Heather Lane. This was a fire damaged structure. It's been vacant for, since the fire damage, and they'd like to move forward and get it repaired. They are asking for variation for the front yard setback of approximately 6.3 feet, I'm sorry, 5.5 feet, sorry, can't read that number. And what they'd like to do is build this addition to the house, these are some of the building elevations. Here again is the front yard setback, showing how much in the red the five and a half foot encroachment is in the front yard. It's going to be a nice looking structure when it's done. Again, just some shots of the different setbacks. The front porch will stick out 6.33 feet. If you notice, the property does, the road does curve back here, so although this is a setback of, you know, in five and a half feet as you go around this road, it doesn't appear to be sticking out too far in front of the existing house. Just going back through the elevations, again, it's a fire damaged structure. This is what it will look like after it's done. The Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed this on their last meeting, and on November 6th, and the Zoning Board of Appeals approved it with a motion of five votes to one vote. So it is in front of you. The Labuds are here if you have any questions of them, or if not, it's ready to move on to the Village Board for a final vote.
Are you going to leave your front walkway to your door there?
We haven't made a determination on the walkway yet. It may be about, since it was still pretty much, but...
Should look nice.
Looks like it's going to make your house look a lot better. Nice improvement.
Yeah. I think it looks very nice.
What kind of wine are you going to serve?
Any other questions by the board?
I did notice that one lady during the hearing had questioned, have you discussed it with any of the neighbors? Have you had any, anybody came forward that says, "I don't think this is going to look right"?
We don't discuss with the neighbors. I talked to them. We didn't see if we have a problem with it.
Okay.
I think everyone feels it would be an improvement.
Okay.
So we'll put this on the next Village Board Agenda so we can get this approved so these votes can get started?
Or is the vote up for tonight?
No.
No, it's up. You'd have to move it on to the next Board Agenda. It would be fine.
All right, well then, let's get that done if we can.
Absolutely. Do you have a possible, we have boards, we have contractors lined up, I don't know if a lot of them...
Legally, you can't do that. I'm sorry, but unfortunately, the Board ultimately has to pass an ordinance, and this is committee. They're not, they really can't vote. They can send it on, but I think from the comments, you should be in pretty good shape and get your contractor really, really lined up.
All right, so we're good with that then, Jim? You're going to move that on?
Yes, we will move it on. Thank you.
As long as you don't paint it red like in the petition. Next thing we have on the Agenda is a Bartlett 59 Special Use for Topsoil Removal. And that is the petitioner, Dan Olson, on behalf of Bartlett 59 LLC. Subject property is the northwest corner of Route 59 and West Bartlett Road. Request is for a special use permit for the removal of topsoil. And the petitioner's here, so if anyone on the Board has any questions, or Jim wants to direct the conversation, that would be good, too.
Well, again, it's pretty straightforward. Our ordinance specifically requires the commercial removal of topsoil in these residential districts to be a special use. Dan and I were both surprised at that, so he's applied for it. Crown Development is the owner of the property. Dan works for Crown. They have identified excessive topsoil on this property, and this is just a topographic map showing the different phases. They will do it in two phases. J K C, if I got that right, Topsoil Removers will be doing it. They are a commercial topsoil removing company, and they are here in front of you prior to moving on to the Plan Commission for the required public hearing. And Dan is here if you have any questions.
They're not going to farm on this anymore?
No. The plan is not to farm in that area. First of all, I'd like to introduce J C K Contractors. Raise your hand. They're, in our view, the premier topsoil suppliers within the Chicagoland area. They work for many, all the collar counties and Cook County, along with many municipalities, including Chicago. I think probably one of their most high-profile jobs right now is Maggie Daley Park in downtown Chicago. As you can imagine, it's a very difficult project, and being in the business that they're in, but they're doing a great job down there. We realized very early on that we had a topsoil problem on this site. The topsoil varies between a foot to two and a half feet thick over the site, averages about two feet. When you develop a site, the re-spread's typically six inches. Obviously, there's a problem with that. And then particularly in Phase One, it's, is an area which is slated for commercial. That's our intention there, and that's a lot of impervious parking lots and whatnot. So we realized early on that we have a topsoil problem, surplus, so either we have to find a place to get rid of that topsoil on-site, or find somebody to take it off our site. And right about the time of that realization, Monica Holsey contacted me, as she does every year, asking if we had extra topsoil in any of our developments to get rid of. And my first response was no, as I've told her every other year that she's called me. And then the light bulb went off, and then I realized that, and we got together, like, I might be able to help, we might be able to help her out with their topsoil deficit issue, and she might be able to help us out with our topsoil surplus issue. So we sat down with Jim and the staff, and they expressed support for the project. We think it helps our project. It certainly helps the marketability, marketability of it, particularly on the commercial site. When that topsoil's already gone, you know, whoever, if we sell it as a bulk sale to a commercial developer, they don't have to deal with the topsoil problem. So it seemed to us to be a win-win situation. So that's kind of the history of it. We'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, either about the project, or the property, or certainly J C K themselves.
How would the removal of the topsoil change or affect the drainage?
The drainage will remain the same. As far as the drainage patterns go, it'll just get lower.
Okay, so we're not going to get calls from the neighbors saying all of a sudden that you flooded their property?
No, no. Actually, we're going to be, we're required by state and DuPage County and the Village, actually, to put together a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we've done and submitted to the Village, and we'll also apply for an NPDS permit with the state, which means we need to have all of our silt fencing in place, our rock checks, making sure that the water leaving the site is, is not turbid. And, but as far as changing direction, as far as which way the water's going, the waters all go in the same direction because all we're doing, we're not changing the topography, other than lowering it by a couple feet.
So the topography doesn't change? I mean, because if I recall right, there are, it's a kind of an undulating hilly area that...
The only thing, the only thing that may change, you know, if there's an area over here that's two feet thick, and then there's an area over here that's one foot thick, obviously it'll change in that respect, but the water's also going to be going down the same ravines and the same gullies because we're not changing, we're not changing the topography of the site, other than just lowering it, so...
Do you think that topography has to change, though, to make it a viable commercial lot?
It will, and that's not what we're proposing today. When we get a, a commercial user, obviously, the site will have to be tabletopped, and that'll be part of our plan and our petition at that point. But right now, that is not our intention. We do not anticipate moving any clay, and we're just looking to get rid of, to, of the excess topsoil at this point. And I should say, you know, once that topsoil is gone, our plan is, is not to farm it at that location. I should say, Phase One is only, obviously, near the intersection. You know, we're going to start there. It's about 50,000 cubic yards of topsoil, so that'll get us down to the...
Start from me?
Fifty thousand cubic yards?
Fifty thousand cubic yards.
That's correct. Yep, out of topsoil. And, but we're, to put it in perspective, we figure, we're, you know, we don't know because our plan is not yet in place, but we figure we're probably at least 100,000 over as far as the topsoil balance on the site. But we do plan on, we were required to permanently, or to permanently vegetate the site up until the point that we, we develop it with a, a, it's a mix, a seed mix that the, the state uses that grows very well in clay. We've had success with it on building pads in other communities that we've done. So that's our intention. But it will not be farmed. It will be vegetated to control the erosion on the site.
And the railroad's all built up along that northern border, right?
Correct.
So, okay.
And I trust you'll be sensitive to the fact that we have a senior center across the street and a school down the road? That's greatly appreciated.
That was a discussion we had early on with J C K. We do anticipate 40 to 50, they anticipate 40 to 50 trucks a day, leaving, entering and leaving the site. We worked with our traffic consultant, who I believe the Village used, Colter Transportation, and about, you know, the routing of those trucks. The discussion right now is, is sending those trucks to the west and going up Napier Road to get to Route 20, rather than putting them on to Route 59.
And that's the concern, I guess, that, as I read through your petition, that the two things that came to mind concerning, where you have 40 or 50 trucks entering and leaving the property on that road, and the traffic's already pretty bad on that road because of train delays and various other traffic issues. And then the noise involved with the residents that live right across the street, like Trustee Ranky was saying, with the senior home, and then you get the other people, they're just the residential property, and then there's a school right up the street as well. So there's a bit of a concern about all these trucks coming in and out with all the traffic, with all the noise. Obviously, it's not forever, but it's, what, a year, year and a half?
It's, for, the Phase One is, they're anticipating a year, actually, less, less than a year.
Probably six months.
And elaborate on the trucks, heavy semis, and if they come into the field three, four times, that's why I figured 40 trucks. It'll be our trucks mostly, but we don't have the semis. But they'll be here.
The advantage here is that they're their own trucks. They control the trucks. It isn't like they have a lot of customers coming in and customers going out. They control the trucks, they control the drivers, they control which directions they go. We had discussed putting, doing a write-in only and a write-out at that, at the location across from Chevron. So it's, it's west of the senior road access, so it's up just a little bit between the school and the senior center. And, and controlling those trucks in that, in that, that way. You know, as far as the noise and the traffic, we're, you know, they're, they're not looking for extended hours, as far as what the Village currently requires, as far as construction goes. At some point in time, it will be a construction site. There will be noise and traffic that goes with construction site. This operation, if it doesn't happen now, it will happen at that time. We're just trying, again, trying to make the, the site more marketable. But we have, and, you know, contractually, you know, they're required to keep the roads clean, they're required to be courteous of the neighbors, and that's certainly our goal as well. We want to be good neighbors. So issues may arise, but I guarantee you, we will address those issues. And I expect the phone call to come to me, not to J C K, and, you know, we'll deal with it because it's our property.
All your trucks are covered?
What's that?
All your trucks are covered?
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
And do you own all your trucks?
Yes.
Or do you jive them out?
No, we don't.
Just wondering.
You know Bartlett topsoil is a premium topsoil, right?
It is. Actually, Pat, Pat grew up in the area, sorry to embarrass you, Pat, Pat grew up in the area, actually farmed the area over there, so he's well aware of the topsoil, which I think is why they came knocking at our door. This is a neat bit of history there, actually, and I didn't know that until I first met him.
Any other questions by the board?
Then this will go on to Plan Commission if you direct it.
All right, let's move this on to the Plan Commission and conduct the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Camer. Next item on our Committee of the whole meeting Agenda is Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Ranky?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item in Finance and Golf tonight, is the 2015-2019 Capital Improvements Program. So with that, I'll ask the staff to, to highlight the changes in this year's, this year's program.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. I think what I will do is what we did last year, which was to begin with a description and a walkthrough of any new project that is included in this document, and then usually what we do is go through the projects that will be included in the budget next spring. So let's begin with the sewer. Page 18 is our first new project under the Sewer Fund. And that is an Influent Drum Screen Enclosure. It's $600,000. We have it scheduled for the year 1718, so as you can see, it's not soon, but I'll let Dan go through the details as well with you.
Thank you. What this is, is at the treatment plant, as the influent comes in from the sewer system, we have pumps that pump it up to the top of the hill, if you've been out there. And from there, there's this, this drum screen that's taking out any of the gravel and that type of stuff. Right now, that's out in the elements, so when it gets cold, like it is now, that we run into freezing issues. And last year, with as cold as it had, it was, we ran into a lot of freezing issues. What we'd like to do is, we're looking at the possibility of locating it into an existing building, which is headed to the north, and it still has to be local to the area, or just building an enclosure around it to be able to heat it, to prevent things from freezing. That's what this consists of.
Can you elaborate on exactly what freezes? I'm just kidding.
Still in the Sewer Fund on page 20 is our next new project, and this is the Country Creek Lift Station Upgrade.
What this consists of is we have an existing lift station located along the Country Creek there, and the lift station itself is 43 feet down in the ground. So basically, we have a tube going down in the ground 43 feet. The pumps are down at the bottom of that, and it's a dry pit right now. So all the controls and pumps are down 43 feet. So our guys need to go down there to be able to maintain that equipment and that. And when we get into flooding situations where that creek starts to, it's right along the edge of the creek, when that creek rises, there's a threat of water getting down into that lift station, which would basically fry out the controls and cause the pumps to not be able to operate, which means sewers would start to back up and that type of thing. So long-term, and that's why we have it out a couple years, we want to be able, it's safety and long-term being able to protect the sewer system from something like that happening. So we want to bring the controls up to the surface, have it so that the guys just basically can pull up, be able to control it at ground level, and then put submersible pumps down in the hole that can deal with pumping the sewer from there.
And we have that, we have that scheduled for 1617, as you can see. The next one, still in sewer, page 22 is a new disc filter, and so you'll talk about what that is.
Sure. If you recall, we recently awarded a project for sand, for our sand filters. This disc filter will replace the sand filters. Right now, we needed the sand to make sure that we're still meeting our EPA regulations, so we, we needed to do that. But long-term, the, the wears in that sand filter our aluminum, and the wastewater is, is, it starts to deteriorate the aluminum to the point where you can see holes through the aluminum. And to go through and retrofit that entire system is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's, the, the, the sand filter equipment itself, that technology is kind of obsolete at this point. The disc filter is the new type of technology that's the most efficient, and long-term is where we're recommending that the treatment plant should go to meet its EPA regulations.
Can this wait a year?
Yeah, it would just be a matter of buying, continuing to buy sand to replace the sand that gets washed away, basically.
Because how much would it be if the lift station went down? Because it's going to, you know, you're going to have to repair it and then still move it if, if it gets flooded, right? So why wouldn't we do the lift station first, and this other one?
Well, they're kind of, they're independent from each other.
I understand that, but you don't do everything at once. I get that.
Right.
But if, if the lift station flooded next year, then we'd have to repair it, and then we'd still have to move it, right? So that's going to cost more than $560,000. But if we just buy sand, we can move this one to 16 and this one to 15.
That's an option. When we went through, I mean, there, as you can see, there's quite a bit of projects that we're looking at, and we kind of prioritize it based on EPA regulations, safety, and that type of thing. We've had that lift station for a long time. We've gotten close a couple times, I guess, over the years, when we've had flooding situations. But we've been able to live with that situation. So we feel living with it for another year or so, the pumps are operating and that type of thing. You're right, though, I mean, if we get hit with a flood, we're going to be dealing with it, or sandbagging, or whatever. But we felt that the sand filter situation needs to be addressed in order to continue to meet our EPA regulations. So we thought that that was a higher priority, and we're kind of looking at the wastewater treatment plant, what needs to be done there, and then out in the system, what needs to be done there, and trying to spread out the costs involved as well. And I know we're looking at some low-interest loans that, so, right. So I think scheduling-wise, a lot will depend on what we can get with the EPA low-interest loans, and how quickly we can get these projects accomplished.
Still in the sewers, you can see one of the things that Dan did when he came here is have a comprehensive review of our sewer operations, and has identified some improvements, prioritize them. And that's why a lot of these go out significantly, like the next one is in the year, engineering in 1718, and 1819 actually is the construction, but that's a point of a capital budget. So you can look long-range and see what we have coming. So that then is on page 24, and that's a nitrification tower.
Right. This tower is, was built in the last major expansion in 93, 94. So you're looking at 20 years, and typically, equipment at the wastewater industry, you're looking at replacement in that 10 to 20 years. And if you look at the improvements, the plant was built in the early 70s, and there was a major improvement in, well, there was an improvement in the 83, then there was another major improvement in 93, 94. And then we've had some miscellaneous pieces in 2008, and then in 2013, we did the influent pumps. The nitrification towers were built in 93. The manufacturers, they're, inside the nitrification tower, there's a media, and basically what it is, is plastic webbing that the water trickles through and creates a biogrowth on it, and that helps denitrify, basically remove ammonia. And that media only lasts so long. They say 20 years. And we're at the point where we're already at 20 years, so looking at all the projects, we said, we need to get this on the list for replacement. So that's why we've incorporated in there. It'll be beyond the 20 years we're looking at right now. The, the equipment on top would also be replaced at that point, so that's the type of things that we're looking at doing there.
Is that the only alternative, or is that the latest?
Well, right now, actually, what we're looking at, and part of, one of the other projects that we're looking at is with the phosphorus requirements that are, that the EPA are going to be putting on us. We're looking at doing a facility plan update, which would look at all these projects. There's a possibility that the nitrification towers in this project could be pushed back or possibly even eliminated. If we do some things with our existing tanks that are available, we might not even need it. But that, it would be part of a facility plan update. But yeah, we're always looking at, what's the best technology out there? What do we have to have in order to meet all of our EPA regulations? But at the same time, you're looking at, what does it cost to run with energy, as far as blowers and power and that type of thing? So we're always looking at ways to save money for the Village.
Is Plan B cheaper? Excuse me? Is Plan B cheaper if we went, fixed some other things?
If we can, if we can avoid spending the 1.9 million and utilize existing tanks, that's what we're going to be looking at, if it would be a cheaper option.
Can we write that term down, denitrifying? I think we need to look that one up. Denitrifying.
Before we move on to the next section, and I'm assuming that's where you're, now, I just want to clarify. Trustee Martin, you're suggesting, then, that we prioritize the County Creek Lift Station upgrade? Can we bump that up a year? Is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, if, we have to move it anyway, and it floods, then we have to fix it and still move it.
I am concerned, if we do lose that lift station for any reason, all of a sudden the sewers are going to back up? Is it feasible? Yeah.
Plus it came close a couple times already?
Right. Is it feasible to move that up a year? Can we do that?
Sure.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay, I, I think that makes sense.
I don't see repairing it and still having to move it, you know, it's just...
And it makes it easier for, and safer for your fellows to go down and do the maintenance, too. So we should take it easy on the employees as well.
You only want to hammer your thumb once.
Right.
You're suggesting to move it to 15, 16? Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Country Creek.
Second.
Sure.
That makes sense to me.
We can do that.
And you had mentioned the denitrifying term, not, no pun intended, but obviously, that's already worn out, right? I mean, you said it only lasts so long, and that time is long expired.
Yeah, we're working with the manufacturer to see if they can test the media, to see whether it's deteriorating at a point where we should get it done right away or not. We put it out there to make sure that we have it on the list for something that we, that needs to be done, but we believe that we can, right now, it's working fine. We're meeting the requirements and all that, so unless something major changes over time, we think we would be able to, you know, on this program, we would be able to, be able to meet the requirements necessary.
Say we don't pass EPA standards, do we have to shut the whole plant down, or?
No.
Okay.
Just take your denitrifying card away.
That's it for sewers. Then we move on to the One New Street program that's included in this budget, and that's on page 45.
What page is that on?
Page 45. And this is a proposal to add a Butler Building in the middle of the two other Butler Buildings.
Pretty, pretty much.
Okay, go ahead.
What we're looking at doing there is, one of the things, when I first started, I, I sat down with all the employees individually to find out, you know, how things are going, things they'd like to improve on, things that we need to work on, looked at the, the facilities and all that. And right now, if you look at the building to the east, which would be more like the white building, to the right of the red block there, that's what we're calling our street garage. That's where you'll find the plow trucks and the maintenance shop, where we fix equipment. And that's where we have the old, there's a couple offices in there, there's a restroom, women's and men's, and then the, basically, there's a small area where that used to be the lunchroom, but back when this building was built, which was in the 80s, we had about six to eight employees. Now we're over 30 employees. So what they've done is they've put tables and chairs out in the garage itself, and that's where they eat. And what they've, one of the... And what they've, one of the complaints that was raised was the pigeons, and the pigeons, they've been dealing with, I guess, for a long time. They've got these little clicking things that are trying to distract pigeons from staying there, they've put up the spikes, they've tried a bunch of things, but I guess pigeons find a home and they stay. But, so what this is, is to give a space where we could have a, a large enough lunch area, which we'd also be able to use as a training site for when we have a safety training, all employees would be able to fit in there, and we'd be able to hold training sessions there. It also would provide for a locker room. Right now, the lockers are out in the garage area, so they really can't use it as a locker room. We would provide a locker room, and then it would also provide some, restrooms, adequate restrooms, and offices for the street supervisor, water supervisor, and some of the senior maintenance guys.
Dan, how many people work in your buildings, in those two buildings?
Between the two buildings, it's mainly the streets and water guys, which is roughly 30, and then we've got the sewer guys that are down in the sewer admin building, but they would also, or would also be able to use the locker room to be able to store their rain gear and that type of stuff. So there's another 10 guys down there.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So, these employees are eating in an unheated, and I'm assuming then uncool area, dodging pigeon droppings?
No, it's heated.
The garage is heated, but when the garage door goes up and it's 20 degrees out, all the heat's gone, so.
And in addition to that, they have, we have a restroom that was built for six people, and it's woefully inadequate.
This should not be the case in the Village of Bartlett.
No.
Should not all be the case in the Village of Bartlett. So I'm glad to see this as an addition, and I hope we can, we can do something in the interim to relieve these conditions, and look forward to you coming forward and moving this project along. That's ridiculous.
Did you, Dan, was there some way that you came up with a dollar amount to build this additions? It doesn't seem like too elaborate of an addition, and that's a lot of money, $350,000.
Is that concrete floor, is that most of the cost, I would think?
It's concrete, we're actually, hopefully, we'll be able to bring that cost down because we're gonna try to do some of the work ourselves.
Along with the clackers, so you can keep the clackers and get rid of the pigeons?
I actually worked with an architect that's local in town, he actually worked on the well four and six wellhouse, and he helped me put a price together, and it was a budget number, but, I mean, and that's how we came up with that.
Where do you guys do training at now?
Well, right now, the sewer department has a small training room, so we would break it up into smaller groups and do it that way, but to do a joint, we don't really, we would have to come, we would have to come here to be able to do it.
Okay, thank you. The last new project is under Other on page 64. This is the West Bartlett Devon Swale and Bike Path. It is wet a lot, if any of you walk down there. It freezes, it's a problem, it's a drainage problem, and now that we fixed all of the large drainage problems around town, we want to make sure that our bike paths are free from frozen puddles.
Right. And this consists of actually having an engineer help us take a look at and find out what solutions are there. The issue right now is, it's pretty flat, so there's not a lot of grading you can do. One thing that we're, long-term, what we'd be looking at is seeing where those low spots are, where the trail ends up flooding out, seeing if we can raise that up and grade the swale, but probably the long-term solution would be putting a pipe in where the swale is, and filling that area in, and then building the trail on top of that new graded area. But we want to have someone take a look at it and find out what makes sense there.
Go ahead.
I just got a question about engineering studies. Every time I look at a new project, there's an engineering fee that's substantial, let's just say. And my question is, is how negotiable are those? Are we using, is it Burke? Are we using all the same engineering company? Are we getting bids? Are we, you know, how are we, how are we going about getting this, these numbers?
What we would plan to do on all these different projects that we've talked about is go through the request for qualifications process, similar to what we did with the FEMA project for the construction engineering. What we do is we put a scope together of what we want accomplished, and then we put it out, kind of a proposal package, and we send it out to consultants, post it on our website and that, and then consultants will put together their qualifications on similar projects that they've done, that they feel that they're the experts for that type of project, and then they submit those qualifications to us. We put a team together, Bob Allen's involved, and whoever, depending on what the project is, as a sewer project, we would have the sewer supervisor, and we evaluate and put a scoring system together to figure out which consultant we feel is the most qualified based on their examples of similar projects, and then whoever that top consultant is, we would sit down and negotiate a contract with them. If we can't negotiate with that top one, then we would go to the second choice.
This is just for the study, this isn't even to do it, though, right?
Right. That's a, that's a budget number, we don't get on it until we get into it.
That ends the new projects for this capital budget. If you would like to go through the projects that we will be looking at accomplishing during the next fiscal year, I'd be happy to go through those. Mr. Chairman, whatever you would like.
Unless there's a desire from the rest of the board, I don't think we need to do that, we are to those projects in detail.
You're aware of all those projects, and we've gone through them before.
Thank you very much.
The street project for Oak, one question on that is, that's pretty much dependent on what the state's gonna do with Lake Street, so that's movable? If, say, the state found money and they were gonna continue to widen and improve Oak Street, it's on like page 43, I think.
I'm sorry, what page is it on?
43.
Okay.
Yeah, they recently completed the area east, this would involve the area west, and my understanding, and Bob might be able to add on to it, is when they make the completion for the other area, which would include the right turn lane onto Oak, that signal will get improved, and that's when our cost share comes in.
Right, so, I mean, say they found money, it could be 16, or it could be 18 if they don't find money, so, okay.
It's not on their current multi-year program, I will say that.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all we have for Finance and Golf.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. That concludes the meeting of Committee Hall. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Seconded by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Camer, with a clerk to call the rule.
Trustee Aaronson?
Yes.
Cameron?
Here.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?